Our regular city council meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the pleasure of the lead.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, city council members. Mayor McCray, to our deputy clerk, our administrative staff, and to our city attorney, and to our audience, and those who are viewing via our broadcast channel and YouTube Live, welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting, and today is Monday, November the 22nd. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the public comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out a request to speak public comment card located on the table in the back of the chambers and hand it to the deputy clerk. Additionally, members of the public who are viewing tonight's meeting via our broadcast channel or YouTube Live can submit their comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo?
Here.
Councilman Barton?
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe?
Here.
Councilwoman Tally?
Here.
Councilman Wisworth?
I'm here, but my microphone is not on.
Hold it, hold it down there.
Councilwoman Webb?
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven is warrant. Twelve is communication, and number thirteen is adjournment. And a motion will be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Number two, minutes. For approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, November 8th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to, um, misapprove the, uh, the meeting of the 8th of November at 7:00.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, reported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the minutes from November the 8th, 2021, at 7:30. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number three is petitioner, and tonight, Mr. Chair and Council, we have a petitioner on the agenda who has a presentation. We have Ms. Kalani Haddon, and she's here with a petition, and it is regarding access to public restrooms and restaurants and gas stations. Ms. Haddon?
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Kalani Haddon, maiden name is Buckley. I want to thank, uh, Mr. John Barton and the rest of the city council. I think you guys are doing a great job. You know, leadership is the road less traveled, so I appreciate you guys, how you guys, you know, at the end of the meeting come together and listen to each other. It's hard to do with a big educated group like this, so I appreciate you all and how you run the Romulus. This is a request for clean, open restrooms, restrooms and restaurants and gas stations in Romulus. This is not just a Ra- a Romulus issue, and I know there's a mandate for, you know, from the governor saying that restrooms should be, you know, or the dining rooms should be closed right now, but I'm saying at the end of the pandemic, when they open the restaurants and everything, I would like to see more open restrooms and, um, for everyone, because there's been a history of, I don't know if anybody's gone to an urban neighborhood and you couldn't find a restroom, you know, and you're like, I really want to use the restroom, it's many miles away. So, um, Romulus pretty much has pretty good open restrooms for everyone, and I know that we're predominantly, um, pretty much predominantly black in Romulus as well as like an urban neighborhood. So I wanted to say, um, especially for low-income neighborhoods and urban communities, I wanted to see this happen, and Martin Luther King once said, "I'm tired of marching for rights that should have been given to us at birth." Um, he also said, "We are more alike than we are unalike," which we can see in Romulus, how we all get along and stuff like that. So, again, I'm Kalani Haddon, um, next, and so, I'm, my name is Kalani Haddon, maiden name is Buckley. I'm in Communication for National Action Network in Western Way, Michigan, which was started by Al Sharpton in 1991. I'm also owner of Lonnie &amp; Co., which is a web design business and social media talk show. Um, I'm a talk show host on social media. Um, I also graduated from Romulus High in 1995 and have been a resident of Romulus since 1990, and I'm a Michigan State University alumnus with a business degree. So, the background is, um, Samuel Young Jr. was a student at Tuskegee Institute, and he was shot and killed in 1966 for trying to use a white-only restroom. We all know this story, the white room, uh, restroom versus the colored restroom, which we've come a long way since then, right? And everybody's doing a lot better, a lot less racism, we get along pretty good. Um, many municipalities have mandated that women get as many or more restrooms because women use restrooms more frequently. In New York, for example, in 2005, they passed a measure that requires many establishments, new, uh, built establishments to have a ratio of women's to men's toilets of a two-to-one ratio, so to have two restrooms for women and versus, you know, the ones for men. At Montgomery Municipal Airport on January 5th of 1962, restrooms were unsegregated per federal court order banning colored versus white restrooms. So we made headway, right? Everybody came together, it was great. Um, the fight is not over, though. The restroom situation has gotten worse for blacks in urban areas. America is now feeling the full bladder effects during the pandemic with the dining and restrooms being closed. Uh, many in all communities, actually, one of the problems is that they use opioids or they use drugs in the restroom, so it's why you see a lot of businesses saying, "Hey, we don't really want to open the bathrooms to the public," but in black neighborhoods, there's more of a closure on the restrooms even though they have a similar problem, right? So, it's that, you know, we want to go ahead and look at that a little bit more. So this is a picture that just shows back when there was like a white, um, drinking fountain versus the colored drinking fountain. If you could really see the picture, you see the colors, um, drinking fountain has a little more rust on it and things like that, and so, um, due to like the, like the, like the redlining, the low-income housing, miseducation, and the elimination of affirmative action, um, sometimes you see that, you know, black people cannot have the best restrooms and structures available to them in, uh, good neighborhoods and good, um, you know, buildings and stuff like, and they're working on that, you know, like you see in Detroit, they're building up the houses, we're making headway, we're working together, and, you know, we're building up, we're trying, so we have to not turn a blind eye to what's going on. Nobody's talking about the restroom situation in the urban communities. So I just wanted to bring light to it and say, maybe Romulus can spearhead this, since I am a Romulus resident, maybe we can say, "Hey, we're going to look at making sure that every, any area in Romulus has good, open bathrooms, clean bathrooms when the pandemic is over." Um, so there was something, there was a Michigan law, there is a Michigan law about restroom access for persons with medical conditions, okay? So if you have, I won't go through all of this, but you, if you have certain medical conditions that you see in letter C, or you utilize an OSME device, then you will be able to show paperwork to say, "Hey, I got a note from my doctor, can I use the bathroom?" And it's a shame that we have to go through these nights, right? Old laws. So if we could, you know, maybe talk about it and say, "Hey, this is something that maybe we can talk to our senator about and say, let's make these restrooms available to anybody that has to use the bathroom." Nobody likes bladder infections, right? So, um, the possible solution, I think, to help the businesses be more open to having open restrooms would be this, um, to have maybe a bin for needles, because nobody wants to go and clean a bathroom and there's drug needles on the ground. Nobody wants to, um, have that problem. Also, maybe hourly bathroom cleaning, also maybe wipes that customers could wipe down the bathroom after they use it, so then it's not much strain on the employees to have to clean as much maybe if the people, the customers clean up behind themselves. Sanitizer outside the door. How many times have you gone to the bathroom and you go, "Just washed my hands, got to touch this nasty knob," so, like, you know, maybe they could have sanitizer outside of the door. Um, maybe make sure that they have toilet paper on the roll, mandate that, like, make sure the toilet paper's on the rolls, people are not spreading germs. And it's possible, maybe we could have an intercom in bathrooms if they want that, and, you know, so there would be a pre-recorded voice saying, "You have, um, you know, three to five minutes when they use the bathroom, or you have two minutes left," so people are not lingering in the bathroom, you know, maybe washing up or doing whatever they're doing that the business doesn't want them to do. And I know that they accommodate for people that might be homeless or whatever, and that's very kind, but for their establishments, they really don't want that, then maybe they could at least just have a note to say, "Okay, hurry up," you know? So, um, you know, and then it wouldn't be like the clerk saying, "Hurry up," and then getting in a fight, it's a pre-recorded, something intercom saying, you know, "Please proceed, you know, hurry, finish up." Um, possibly have a janitorial company come clean the restrooms, maybe three times a day, instead of having the clerk do it and having to leave their station, maybe that would help, but, um, also maybe only have gas station bathrooms open after 10:00. So, what am I asking? I'm asking, can Romulus open more clean restrooms when the mandate is lifted? And is there interest to spread this to other urban communities or to the Senate? And what are the next steps? So, my name is Kalani Haddon, any, um, you can, uh, reach me at www.lonniehaddon, lonnylate.com, and you can email, email me at info@lonnylate.com, and my number is there as well. Um, do you guys have any questions?
Any question from council?
Uh, Mr. Wisworth?
If I can, you, you know, I, back what you've been talking about, but you, what upsets me the most, as I've gone to a gas station, I've spent 50 bucks to purchase their gasoline, I'm a, um, senior citizen on blood pressure medication, and I go in there and being told it doesn't work, it's out of order, that can be an embarrassing thing for a senior citizen, believe me, akin. And, um, I'm in favor of doing, of course, when they come to build, and I'll ask Celeste about that, uh, they're told about the bathroom requirements, aren't they?
Well, yeah, there, there's a certain amount of restrooms that are required for square footage and, and.
Make them keep them open, you know, I mean, I, you know, especially with the biggest excuse, "It don't work, it's out of order."
It's out of order.
I mean, that's ridiculous, and I agree with what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Wisworth.
Ms. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just ask the, uh, city attorney, is it, what laws forces any restaurant or even gas station or party stores or any type of retail to provide, um, the rest? Yeah, to the public?
Um, well, the statute that. The statute that was cited to you tonight is very limited, it doesn't hardly protect anybody because you have to have this medical condition in order to be under that one. So there's not a lot of state statute level stuff that requires them to be opened certain hours. Now, in the zoning realm, if they were, somebody were to build something new in Romulus where they had to get site plan approval for it, then there is a requirement based on the occupancy there's going to be of how, how much bathroom space you'd have to have, and it has to be open. So I think most of the issue is probably related to stuff that's been around for a long time, that doesn't have what you'd have if you were to be building it today, uh, and what could be done to try to have those kind of situations be open. As Mr. Wisworth said, you know, the gas station that's built 30 years ago or whatever, just isn't, wasn't ever built to accommodate what we would like today, so.
And I, I asked the city attorney that because I think this also need to be addressed maybe to, on the state level, because as, uh, our, uh, city council person that sit on planning said that a lot of times they discuss pertaining to the employees.
Employees, um, square footage of the building, a lot of different circumstances.
So that would be, uh, something that maybe you can look into, uh, talking with our, our state restaurant, that's why I asked the city attorney, were we able to enforce the restaurants and the gas station party stores to, to have, especially those that are existing now, that's why I asked you that question. You know, were we able to enforce them to do that now if they wasn't, you know, required to do it before?
Right, because there's usually an employee bathroom?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't understand, if it's not behind the counter, why they can't open that to the public as long as someone is keeping it clean. And I understand employees want to have a nice, clean bathroom versus, you know, if somebody comes in, you know, under the influence or whatever, uses a bathroom, messes it up, they want to have a clean bathroom, but don't we all have that problem?
Right.
You know what I'm saying? You know, it is important, I think as a business, I would want to make sure my customers have an open, clean bathroom for everyone in all neighborhoods, like Mr. Wisworth said. It, it, it happens in other neighborhoods too, but on a great scale in, in urban communities.
And, and I, I'm not trying to push the, the responsibility off on the council, I was just making sure legally that we could do something about it. And that's why I said, maybe if you, you know, dealt with the state?
Okay.
Because like if the state enforced something like that, we would have to, you know, be required to follow, but I'm not for sure, and that's why, you know, I asked the city attorney that question. Is it something that we as council can do, especially for those that already exist?
Right, that's what I didn't know, I didn't know if I need to start locally, I didn't want to go start barking up the trees.
Yes.
You know? I want to make sure that we know what's going on, and I'm definitely not going to say anything bad about Rom- Romulus is a great city. I mean, we have pretty good buildings, pretty good gas stations, restrooms, community, you know, I, I love living around, that's why I chose to stay here for so many years. Um, so, yeah, so thank you. So my next step would be to talk to my, to the senator, our senator, and see if we can get that going.
Senator, and also our, um, uh, state representative, Alagazza and Erica Geis.
Who?
Erica Geis is our, uh, state senator.
Okay.
And Alagazza is our state representative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tally?
Thanks for your presentation. Let me ask you this, you do a lot of research, it looks like. Do you know how do you, we, we can get the data to see what, because you got to start at home first, so in the city, uh, which businesses may or may not be adherent to, I mean, having a restroom open, do you have that, any of that type of information?
You know what, I looked for that information, that would be great to have, but I couldn't really find exactly how, you know, nobody's really talking about this issue.
Yeah, and I guess it wouldn't really be published, huh?
Yes, I, I don't have a tally of like how many have open restrooms, that's not something they really say.
Yeah.
But, you know, I know that we have a lot that are open, but one just closed, like for instance, on Van Born and Wayne Road?
Mm-hmm.
They have that mobile gas station, and sometimes they're available, if you look like you, uh, okay person to open the bathroom to, you can use the employee bathroom. This happens in a lot of gas stations, a lot of businesses. If you look okay, and I, I look okay sometime, I go in there, you know what I'm saying? Like, I go in there, I'm okay. But as for somebody that may have be, they may be younger than me, they may be rugged, they, you know, they may be, you know, with more relaxed looking for that day, maybe they don't get the, the bathroom courtesy.
So you won't know unless you actually go into the business and check it out?
Yeah, if they like you or not, so, you know?
Gotcha, thank you.
Sometimes it's not a race issue, it's, do I want to let you in my bathroom?
Got you. No, thank you.
All right, thanks.
If I may? Thank you, Ms. Haddon.
You're welcome.
Buckley. For your presentation. And yes, there, there, I'm like my colleague, there have been occasions where I filled my tank and maybe didn't have the gloves on or whatever, and all I want to do is go and wash my hands, okay? And you can't, and you can't do it, and also it is, it's a, um, it's a judgment, you know, if I look as though I just came from council, I get in that restroom. If I look like I've been working out my garden, I'm sorry, ma'am, it's, it's not working. But also, I have to agree, start with our representatives, and then, um, I would like to say, I would love to speak with you again, once you have spoken with the representatives, and, and just go all the way, I mean, go to the governor's office. Uh, uh, but we do understand the climate, today's climate, uh, with, uh, the COVID, with, uh, the drug use, but I don't think anyone should be judged on how their appearance is, um, you know, for not using the, the restroom at all. And thank you, thank you so much for bringing that to us.
I appreciate that, I appreciate you all, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other question from council? No other questions from council? Thank you, Ms. Haddon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'd like to say happy anniversary to Stan and Ellen Braggs on their, their 34th year? A marriage.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and I hope you, 34 or more, happy marriages.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Barton.
At this time, the chair would wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up, and be safe, and love one another, because we are truly blessed to be on this earth, and let's keep this city moving forward. We live in a good city, we just have to work together. Sometime we have differences, and let's try to work these differences out and move forward in the future. With that, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, support by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved, thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, city council, I'm clerk, deputy clerk. I want to start off by wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, hopefully they spend the time with their family this weekend and, and get out and about and, and observe that great tr- uh, tradition we have for Thanksgiving. This year, I'm thankful for, usually we have a, um, a house full of people, about 30 to 40 people, and I am thankful that my wife has taken the year off, and we are not going to have a house full of company we're going to go visit this year, so I'm very thankful for that, so. I also want to thank the seniors for having a great luncheon last week, uh, Rose put on a great function over there, um, we were able to pop in for a minute and, and visit with them for a little bit, so a great event for our seniors over at the seniors' center. Couple things I want to talk about before I get into the actual items on my report. Um, Reefs Across America, great event, this is our fifth year we're doing it in the City of Romulus, every year we've been able to sell out, um, this year we're a little bit short, so hopefully people will take a look at the links we've been sharing. Um, it's a great event on our veterans at our cemetery, we've been able to catalog over 300 veterans there, uh, from Army of the Grand Republic and Civil War, um, all the way up to current day, so, um, looking forward to doing that. Please check the link on our Facebook page and also on the city website, um, it's also, November 30th is the deadline for ordering a wreath, so if you want to order a wreath, please do so as soon as possible. So to get those numbers up, we have over 300 re- uh, veterans, like I said, and we want to make sure that they're all recognized, um, with the Reefs Across America event again this year, making another success. Also, you see the buckets are out for the clothing drive, we're helping the VFW, um, collect, um, winter clothes, lightly used blankets, new sheets if they have them, toiletries, any non-perishable items we can, uh, we can give our veterans, they're taking that down to the Michigan Veterans Foundation, it's a homeless shelter in Detroit for our nation's veterans, so we're going to support the VFW's efforts, and we have, uh, the collection boxes at the, at City Hall, at the rec, at Fire Station 4, and also at the DPS Building on Wayne Road, so hopefully you, be, uh, have some, uh, time to go through your closets and, uh, and see if you have any old clothes we can use, and some gently used, we'll take it down and keep those guys warm during this winter. That being said, I'd like to get into my report. Before I get started here, I'd like to bring up Fire Chief Kevin Kraus and Jamie Smith to talk about the apparatus we have here before you.
Good evening, council, mayor, Madam Clerk, Mr. Deputy Clerk, uh, this evening we come before you, um, with a new piece of, uh, medical technology that we will be implementing in the City of Romulus, uh, in our ALS transporting, uh, service model to the citizens of the city, uh, with your approval this evening. Um, the device that you see in front of you on the table is what we call a Lucas device, and it's manufactured by Stryker, which is a Michigan-based company. Uh, it's a global company, but, um, they're Michigan-based, out of Grand Rapids, and, uh, all of the equipment, for the most part, is made here in Michigan and distributed through, uh, the Michigan supply chain, so, uh, good support of a, a state company. Uh, what this di- this device does is it, uh, automates our CPR process, uh, is basically a extra set of hands for firefighters on scene for one of the most, um, resource-intensive calls that we run on, which is a person not breathing and no pulse. Um, so with that being said, I'm going to introduce, uh, Jamie, the representative for Stryker, and she's going to demonstrate this piece of equipment for you.
Thank you guys for having me here today. I am the local representation for Stryker, so I actually live here, um, just outside of town, county market here in Wayne County, and I, um, have had the opportunity to work for Stryker for almost 10 years. So all sorts of things, neurocoequipment, to neurosurgeons, all these different pieces of equipment Stryker makes, there you go, you can hear me a little better now? And this is the most impactful, coolest piece of equipment that we offer. This is the piece that I get the phone calls, our vice president talks about, about stories here locally where people are safe with this device. When you guys watch movies, okay, or we watch, let's say, Grey's Anatomy, and they're doing CPR, right? You guys will tell you that it's absolutely nothing like what CPR actually is in the real world. It's exhausting, it takes a lot of manpower, it's a chaotic scene. Okay, this device comes on scene, and what I hear from my firefighters time and time again is it calms the scene. It frees up hands to do true paramedic work, is what they tell me. This helps provide consistent compressions, and we're able to do the other things we need to do to keep somebody alive. We know the two more most important things that help people survive after cardiac arrest is early defibrillation, so having AED programs in your community, having the fire and police have AEDs, and consistent compressions, okay? So this type of headed device is what makes the difference between just saving somebody's heart and having somebody actually walk out of the hospital afterwards, okay? Because again, they're getting good blood flow to the brain. Once we lose blood flow to the brain, once we're losing brain cells, it do not come back. So those are those stories that I've had personally in my family, where people have, again, they've saved their hearts, but we're not able to, to save them, they're not walking out afterwards. Super easy device to use, again, we're a Michigan-based company out of Kalamazoo, if you can count, you can use Lucas, already got it out, but it comes in a backpack, so they can walk right into scene with it on their backs, 25 pounds fully loaded, they get it out, they get the backboard under the patient, and then they apply the device itself, okay? Um, if you can count, you can use Lucas. Okay, so it always starts in number one, if you guys are all up here, you can see it, put your hands on it if you really want to, but in one, we can just move the suction cup down, that gets an eye to the patient's chest. Two, it makes a slight adjustment, and then three, they can elect which kind of setting they're going to use, and it's going to start providing compression. All right, I won't talk over that, I won't make everyone listen to that. Um, but what it's doing is it's providing 102 compressions at 2.1 inches depth. That is what the American Heart Association says, is how currently today they see as the most efficient way for us to be providing good compressions and blood flow to the brain and through the body. Uh, as these guys, as you know, AHA sometimes, they do all these studies and they come out with changes. What's the thing I don't want to have happen? I don't want you to buy this today for your community, and then in a year, I tell you, oh, now it's 115 compressions, save lives. Now you're having a old device that doesn't work. Instead, what Stryker has done is this is an updatable device, so we can actually send the update out to the system, and the next day, you're ready to go with a device that's, that's pro. We actually already even have pre-programmed settings in there, planning for what could come in the future that we kind of guess that AHA do. Okay, so it's a relevant device that would be just relevant today, but it can be relevant, you know, eight years down the road for you. So are there questions, concerns, things like? So, are there questions, concerns, things that I can hit on for you, that you have interest in?
Mr. Wisworth?
I got a question from my old cop days, would you still use a buoy bag to breathe for them?
If we're going to be there, yes, once we're on scene, yeah, we're going to be using that.
So, that's used in conjunction with the bag?
Yeah, and a really cool thing that this offers, since you have that knowledge, this has some other studies in it, so I actually blinks at them, and helps them provide appropriate ventilations, so they're not over-ventilating, because that's something that AHA has actually seen is happening with patients out in the field.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
So, it does free up hands, so each person is different, how do you know that you're going to do the right thing for the right, the machine knows that this person needs this, or another person needs that?
Yep, so, good questions there. So, a couple of differences we see in patients, one is patient size, okay? So, obviously, different kinds of people fit different. With this device, and it's a little bit deceiving on this style management, but most people that are bigger carry their weight down here, okay? So, the first thing we know with Lucas is, in this area, I referenced a study, a really in-depth study we did out in Minnesota, that this will fit ninety-five percent of the population in this area. Three percent are going to be those people that are too big, two percent are too small. Departments will tell you that you'll be surprised who this will fit on, because again, it's fitting up here, because that piston's going to hit right where they're doing CPR, okay? So, a lot of times, we're able to fit it on people that surprise us. The other thing is, if they were putting it on me right now, they're probably going to be really nice to me and careful. When you're unconscious and you're in cardiac arrest, they're going to move fat tissue as they need to, to make it fit. So, that's one thing. When we talk about styles of patients and people we can use it on, what the fire department ask themselves is, would I do that a hundred and two compressions at two-point-one inches depth? Because that is what AHA has told us, for people that we consider to be non-pediatric, that we can do, that we can use a Lucas device, so if we do that a hundred and two compressions in two-point-one inches depth. So, something that they look at when they're determining, can I use this on a pediatric? Okay, if that alarm sounds, they're going to take it off, that means that person is too small, and it is not somebody that they would use the Lucas on, okay? One other thing you'll notice, let me do a hard restart, so it forgets this patient, it'll actually remember your patient while you're on scene, but if you watch, okay, I don't want to get so you can see it a little bit better, and two, there's a slight movement it made, and then if you watch, the first few compressions are not going to be as deep, okay? And then slowly, it figures out that appropriate depth. So, what the device is actually doing is it's measuring that specific patient's chest resistance to make sure that it's giving two-point-one inches depth. So, that's kind of your answer for that variability in people. So, they can use this on anybody that's eaten up, showing signs of puberty, because that's kind of what the AHA says for pediatrics or critical, they can use it on pregnant, traumatic arrest. So, it's incredible, I mean, I have just incredible stories from the area, from the surrounding fire departments, of how this device has impacted them, just not on scene, but also moving in the back of the vehicle, to keep your staff safer as well, so they're not getting up trying to do CPR in a moving vehicle.
Thank you.
Ms. Roscoe, and then Ms. Abdo.
So, the main question I have is, is great device, training for our fire department, what does that involve, and how long does it take, et cetera, et cetera?
So, that's the great thing about it, being local reps, versus just buying this off of, you can't even buy it, but if you just bought it off online, right, and they get something that shows up. With me being local, I'm a local account manager, so I take care of not just their Lucas devices, but all the yellow stretchers you see in the world, that are all made in Michigan, too, those all belong to me. So, I come and just send us some of these powered stretchers, and I train everybody on the entire department, we go through it, we make sure everyone's comfortable, and typically, chief has his part of his training throughout the year, some reef stretchers, people get their hands on it, and then if they're running into, hey, we have questions, I'm local representation, there's no cost to the city for me to show up and train, that's just an expectation of my job.
Okay, that was the next question.
Yep.
What's the cost?
Nope, expectation of my job, to come out and train when you present.
Ms. Abdo?
That was my question.
Oh, that was your question? Any other question?
Yes.
I think, Ms. Webb, you have a question?
Yeah, Mrs. I go after.
No, but she spoke already, you speak already?
Ms. Williams.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
I just noticed how, when you originally first turned it on, how it was, and that's plastic, so I'm thinking, and I'm acting as the fist on my chest, so does it operate the same way on an actual human as it does the mannequin?
Yeah, within reason, so it looks a little different, obviously, as mannequin's not as heavy as a real person, so you'll see the device wants to move a little bit more than it would with somebody that's really on it, it's a really good question, because it's a good point with a half man, him like this, versus a full. I have had, my dad, my sister and I both worked for Stryker, and he made the comment to me, he was like, oh man, I saw that run, I think, in Kanso County, or someone over there got it, they did a, a lot of communities love this, because they can do videos, they do newscasts on it, they'll do articles about it, I mean, it's, it's an amazing thing for the community, and so he saw the video of it, and he's like, oh, I don't know if I want that used on me. And I said, Dad, if you are, people who are, this is being used on, are clinically dead, okay? We're trying to bring them back, we're trying to shock them back into a rhythm that brings them back. You would want this used on you, in that case, okay? When they're doing CPR, they're already breaking their ribs, okay? So, they've already done that before they're going to apply this, and none of that sounds fun, but if you get to wake up in the hospital, see your family after, you want them using Lucas. And I'll tell you, in the community that I'm from, it's very rural, when I was eighteen years old, I had a pulmonary embolism, it probably took thirty-five minutes for them to get to me, and I am like fighting, I'm not the rep over there, but to get somebody in that community to help get these for them, because it makes such a difference for, for where you are and what you're able to do. So, it's, it's kind of, my dad said the same thing, I hope I want that used on me, I don't want both my daughters to be there, I said, Dad, you can do, when you're in that case, because it makes the difference, it really does.
Thank you.
John, I have one comment, and I have three questions.
Okay.
The comment is, thank you so much that it is updatable. Okay, I understand, and I can see, it appears to be safer if it was, if I had to, you know, you had to perform it on me, I would take that rather than the manual, okay? But, for the chest resistance, does this, what about someone with a pacemaker, or who had had open-heart surgery?
Those are great questions, you know what you're doing. So, the same thing Stan had this question when I was down in Monroe County, and I actually was meeting with their entire chiefs board, and the medical control director for the county was there. Now, again, it's going to be local protocol, which is what he will chiefly be able to say to more than me, but the way we look at it, what would you do in a normal case? Would you do a hundred and two compressions in two-point-one inches depth? That's what this device is doing. If his answer is yes, then that is what we would do, okay? So, somebody with a pacemaker, someone with open heart, and the answers are yes, then you would use it. There is, I know at least about one application where there's kind of victory views of alabat patients, where we probably would, most would not use Lucas, some would say they would, but again, it's giving that same, if they were on scene, and they're going to do two-point-one inches depth and a hundred and two compressions, that's what Lucas is doing. So, that's more going to be a clinical decision by the department, if that's not an option, they wouldn't be doing manual compressions in those cases anyways.
I, I think I would want that one, because it's consistent, and I know with myself, I would probably end up, you know, cracking a rib or something, and crying, you know? Also, just one more question. Will PD have any officers in on this training? And I know it's not for them, but we never know, we may have our, God forbid, firefighters that need that, and there's not enough firefighters to administer that, you know, if there was, and, and I'm not speaking of the, the patrol, the whole, I'm just speaking of maybe the brass, you know, the sergeants who would, you know, would be on call, you know, those three sergeants that would take those calls right away.
Yeah, I'll have to convey that with Chief Hines over at PD, and I also have the records of our medical control board protocols, to figure out what the licenser level is.
Yes.
Or this, most of these officers are de-strained to the MMR, or medical first responder level, which is a CPR first aid and AED training, I'm not sure where our local protocols, as far as PD response can be with this.
And, and thank you, thank you so much for the gift, you know?
Thank you for having me here.
And thank you, Director Kraus.
If no more question, attorney?
Does Lucas break ribs?
So, the answer to that is they will have already broken ribs before they apply Lucas. So, when they show up on scene, Lucas is a tool that helps them do their job. So, they're going to start compressions before the application of the device, and when they start compressions, typically, they've already broken ribs.
Usually, within the first two or three compressions that we start, before that gets inside the house and is applied, it will already hurt.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a part of, if you have CPR done on you, it's not something that, thankfully, most of the time, you're unconscious when that's going on, so that's kind of, it should have already happened if they're getting good compressions.
Any other questions from council? No other questions? Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you, Jamie, for a great presentation, also, your company for, for coming up with a great piece of equipment right there. As a former volunteer firefighter in the city, I know how incredibly hard it is to deliver the same depth and same compression to be consistent, even when you're talking about riding the ambulance and transporting on the way, so that makes it incredibly tough job, even easier, so it's a great piece of equipment by your company, too. And also, Chief Kraus, thank you again for providing the top-notch service for our residents and community that they deserve, so thanks for bringing that here, and thanks for bringing the equipment, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would like to add with this, this kind of the icing on the cake is, we've reached out to the Beaumont Foundation in regards to these devices, and the Beaumont Foundation will be covering the cost of one of these devices, along with some of the extra batteries, chargers, and the initial supply of the suction cups that you see, and that's all included in the package that the mayor will, will be presenting here shortly.
Nice.
Thank you.
Do the chair make that motion if they support it?
Okay, Ms. Webb? It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
John, the mayor has.
I appreciate everybody's support.
I'm sorry, you know, Thanksgiving coming up, and I'm thinking about turkey and all that good stuff, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I would like to, I would like to ask Romulus City Council to concur with the administration and authorize a sole source purchase of two Lucas chest compression systems for the city of Romulus Fire Department from Stryker Medical, for total costs of thirty-nine thousand, six-hundred-seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents, under the terms of the sole source purchases exemption in section thirty-nine dash eleven, subsection D one, C one, the city of Romulus purchasing ordinance.
Support.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Support. I make the motion.
Read the motion, read the motion.
We're thinking about turkey here, John.
Right, right. Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Webb, and that's supported by Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
The sole source purchase of two Lucas chest compression systems, any discussion?
One comment.
One comment from?
Thank you so much for bringing the device, because so many times, we're voting on things, and we have no visual at all, and I, I'd really like to see what, what it is you're talking about, you know, hands-on type things, it's really helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Another item on my report tonight, I would ask, city council, concur with the administration to authorize the mayor and the clerk into entering an attached intergovernmental agreement with the state of Michigan, Department of Technology, Management and Budget, Office of the Michigan Public Safety Communication System, for the necessary program of Motorola radio equipment, at a cost of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, under the terms of chapter thirty-nine of the city of Romulus Code of Ordinances, section thirty-nine dash eleven, subsection D one I.
Do the chair for ma'am?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration, and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached intergovernmental agreement with the state of Michigan.
Support. It's been motioned by Mrs. Webb, supported by Mr. Wisworth, for intergovernmental agreement with the Michigan Public Safety Communication System, any discussion?
To the chair, just a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Captain, who is our member liaison officer?
Who's her?
Who is our member liaison officer? Who's been appointed to that position?
Oh, I'm, I'm leading the.
You're leading it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, no, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
And to the chair, I have one question, Captain, how long would this program take for the radios?
From the receipt of the, the equipment, which is all going to Comsource, which is the vendor that's contracted through Motorola, once they receive it, and then everything gets up to the state, it's normally about a ninety-day turnaround, based on the backlog of the state, so we're hoping that everything will be transitioned over by, by the middle of January, is the target date.
Okay, so that's the radios?
The new radio system, everyone, the, the, the system is about seventy-one pieces, with mobile, portable, and the dispatch consoles, and once we receive all those, then they'll be sent to the state for attempting a new program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks.
If there's no other comments, roll call, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Thank you, that will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Number six is the clerk's report. Six A, this is a study session request. Treasurer Stacy Page is requesting a forty-five-minute study session for December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at six-thirty PM, and this is to discuss the quarterly investment report. The date and time are available for the request.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion for a study session requested for Monday, December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at six-thirty PM, to discuss the quarterly investment report.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Williams, for a study session request for Monday, December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at six-thirty PM, to discuss the quarterly investment report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Thank you. Six B, reappointment to the Romulus Board of Review. The executive advisory committee held a meeting on Monday, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, to discuss a recommendation by Julie Albert, Director of Assessing and Financial Services, to reappoint Reverend Edward Thomas Jr. to the Romulus Board of Review. It is therefore requested that council concur with the recommendation of the executive advisory committee, and reappoint Reverend Edward Thomas Jr. to the Romulus Board of Review, with the term to commence on January one, twenty-twenty-two, and expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wisworth?
I'm going to move that we, that we reappoint Reverend Edward Thomas to the Board of, to the Board of Reviews, and it will expire December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by, who supported it? Ms. Williams? For reappointment of the Romulus Board of Review, any discussion? Here ain't no discussion, roll call vote? Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council.[1691.87] Thank you, council. Before I close out my report, I placed in your boxes, or either in front of you, the meeting schedule. You know, last week, I had a few errors and some dates. And so what I have before you are the corrections for that, you know, for the council's schedule for the 2022 year. What we were trying to do, attempting to do, was to, ahead of time, to those alternate dates in, you know, on election, when there's a council meeting before the election date, excuse me. And so instead, I, and I neglected to realize that third Monday is also a planning commission. So we just thought it's just best just to keep it as it is, just keep it regular. And then as we come up to, you know, August and November election, if we need to move the date, we will ask council at that time. So it's better just, so that it's not confusing, we'll just leave it regular. I also want to point out that there are two federal holidays. You have January 4, 2022, and then December 27, 2022. That Monday, the city is closed, and that would be, you know, in observance of the New Year, and as well as Christmas. So since we are closed, it is, you know, a federal holiday, so the council meeting will be held on that Tuesday, okay? So there's no action that's necessary, it's just I wanted to point that out to you. This is the corrected copy.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
And I think I'm going to ask Deputy Clerk if he'll take over from here. I just need to excuse myself for a moment. I apologize.
Okay.
Good evening.
Next on the agenda will be the treasurer's report, and she is not here and has noted that she does not have any actions on her report. That will bring us to number eight, public comment. This is the portion of the agenda for those in the, in the audience who would like to address City Council. The rules to address City Council can be found on the back of the meeting agenda. If you would like to address City Council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. Please note, members of the public who submitted a public comment card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. As a reminder, members of the public viewing tonight's meeting via the city's broadcast channel or YouTube Live can submit their public comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment period. Mr. Chair, we do have one public comment card, and this is from Tony Heimberger.
Good evening, Tony Heimberger, 38480 West Huron River Drive. The State of Michigan, as I'm sure you all are aware, passed the replacement of lead and galvanized water lines, both. In 2020, the City of Romulus gave to the State of Michigan, and these numbers came directly from Eagle, the Water Division, with Chris. We had supposedly 39 lead lines. We had 7,959, unknown but doubtful that they are lead, is what the city told them. This number's not right. I had a discussion with the DPW director today. I've already spoke to Julie about some of the items that were discussed, which we're not going, we won't go into that. Anyways, we know this number is wrong. And how do we know this? By our own city's information, in which our director does not think that we have enough brains to think about. If we had 39, we had replaced 5%. That's two, so that takes down to 37. But right now, the city has a waiting list of over 50 homes to be done. That's a far cry from 39. So for our DPW to say, no, there's only that number, we don't have to worry about it, and really worry about the other ones until 2025, when the complete list has to be given to the state, we need to get it done before that. We have $300 million that the governor's putting out right now for water, and to replace these lines. You have another $1.3 million coming from the item that the president just passed, that's coming to the State of Michigan, $1.3 billion. If we wait until 2025 to start working on this, we're not going to get anything. It's going to be gone. It's, it's time that we really sit down and think and look. Because I, when I was speaking to him, I said, well, for example, my home's 100 years old. Okay. He goes, give me the address and I'll come and check. Well, my comment to him, and I wasn't trying to be rude, but, okay, that's fine for me, but what about the rest of the residents? Shouldn't they have that same option? Are we telling the residents, hey, give us a call if you think you have a lead line, so we can find out for sure? We're not doing that. Only if somebody complains do we do that. But it should be out there somewhere that we should be able to call, and if we can find somebody in the city to come out and check these homes, would be the best way to start finding them. To say that we have 7,900 homes that, ah, no, I don't think we're allowed, no, we know it's not correct. The other item that's also concerning, and speaking with the State of Michigan, is when we turn off water. John, I'm going to need a few more minutes.
Go ahead, Ms. Heimberger, give you a couple more minutes.
When we turn off someone's water, if their home is built before 1986, there's a possibility that they could be lead lines or galvanized lines, not actual. But if the water's turned off more than six hours, what the people should be doing when the water's turned back on, is those items should be flushed completely. But we do not give those people a pamphlet for the waters that we turn off when they turn it back on. Should we not be doing that? That came from, right from Eagle, the Water Division of the State of Michigan. What can we do about this? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only written request?
Okay. Are there any more comments from the audience? If there's no other comments from the audience, we'll close this part out.
Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Number 10 is new business.
Oh, Mr. Wisworth?
If I could, obviously, on, the just coming Thursday is, is a Thanksgiving, and our good friends over at Five Points hit some helping hands. I, I gave a couple turkeys, and they're looking for turkeys to pass out to the people in town. And they'll be open Tuesday and Wednesday from, from 10 a.m. to, I believe it's 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisworth. Any other comments? Ms. Webb?
Yes, to the chair, if I may, I'd like to address the mayor. If we could possibly, if you would possibly get with Mr. Heimberger, and especially in regards to if the water has been disconnected and the flush pamphlets, you know, and, and then check into those numbers for us, and maybe get back with the council on it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. And what I'll do is I'll have Roberto come do a presentation for City Council, because they've been actively going after these lead service lines as much as they can, as much as funded, notifications being sent. So I'll make sure we're doing it the right way, we're doing it the proper way, and I'll have Roberto come up here and give you the data on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Webb?
And could we, to the chair, to the mayor, can we make sure we actually get at least some of the information before he do the presentation, so in case we have further questions, we don't have to question him while he's doing his presentation? Because it's very important, we know what happened with Flint, and now what's going on with Saginaw, and some of the other cities in the State of Michigan with the lead piping. So we want to make sure that we don't end up with a serious water issue with our residents here in the city around us. Thank you.
Thank you. To the, to the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to respond to Councilman Williams, I'd like to do you one better. If you guys have thoughts or concerns you'd like to see included in that information, just forward that information over to Julie Otoko, and we can make sure that Roberto knows when he does a report, what data you're looking for, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from, from the council?
If there's no more new business, it takes us to number 11. Warrants for approval is warrant 21-22.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pay, make a motion, we pay warrant 21-22 in the following amounts. General fund, $161,496.30. Major street fund, $1,404.56. Local street fund, $773.29. Public safety fund, $27,933.90. Cable TV, $248.23. Mayorman Road Special Assessment, $231.96. Street lighting fund, $49,613.55. Oakwood SAD, $161.96. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, $98.65. 911 Service Fund, $100. NARC forfeiture state, $1,014.46. Library fund, $4,871.46. DDA, $13,156.26. Tifa District 2, $2,168.11. CIP bonds, court buildings, $750. Water and street fund, $271,703.37. Motor vehicle, $66,347.27. Technology services, $5,812.55. Retiree insurance benefits, $62,465.96. Property and liability insurance fund, $7,858.41. Revolving fund, $9,285. Current tax, $12,448.55. Delinquent personal property fund, $8,346.78. Payroll fund, $148,618.65. Totalling all funds, $856,909.23.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number 21-22 for $856,909.23. Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to say, I think the mayor's office, I spoke with Julie earlier today, and the information was given, I know to me and to the rest of the council pertaining to the check number 769, 76943, the municipal complex, and it was actually broke down. So I just want to thank the mayor's office for giving me that information, or sharing that information with the council. I just wanted that to be known.
Thank you. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Or Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
Number 12 is communication. Do the chair.
Yeah, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I want to just give a shout out to Mr. Roten. He had a ribbon cutting today, ribbon cutting today at Metro Realty Group on Eureka. Very nice event. Everybody that came out to support had a nice turnout of supporters. So just want to give him kudos for his building. Looks awesome, and it looks great. So just want to shout out to him. And I've also dropped a ball. We started a contest a couple weeks ago, and I've dropped the ball in announcing it. So I am bringing it back up today. It's the Romulus, Why I Love the City of Romulus, Letters to Romulus. We are calling all Romulus, Romulus writers, which started October 15, the City of Romulus is accepting letters from Romulus residents that statewide, they love their city. Please use the provided template. There's a template for this letter. If you need additional pages, you can provide up to one picture. This event is about spreading positivity. Any letters with derogatory words or antagonisms will not be accepted. Letters are due November 30, which is about, probably about a week or so from today. Up to three letters will be chosen and read during the Romulus City Council meeting on December 6. Prizes will be also given out to the writers of the letters during the meeting, open to all Romulus residents of all ages. They can be, letters can be dropped off or mailed to the Romulus City Hall at the Community Development Office, or you can send a message on Facebook. All letters must be received by November 30. So if you have any questions, please call the Community Development at 734-942-7545. And I just want to thank Angelia and Chandler in the Community Development Office for putting this together, the letters, the template, everything needed for these letters for this contest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Communication?
Communication?
Communication? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Yes, first of all, I would like to inform the Romulus residents that we're still at the Romulus High School doing the Forgotten Harvest, starting at 11 until, normally we have to be off the parking lot by 1:30 before the buses come to pick up the students. And also, there were questions concerning the court water bill, and I would just ask the mayor office, I would like to see the document, whether it was a check or what form that that was paid. I noticed that it's saying that it was paid in full. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that was paid in check, it was received today, so.
Okay.
We can get a copy of it if you need to.
And, and also, last Tuesday, I received, actually, it was a resident that was up at Forgotten Harvest helping us to, to distribute the food, and her husband came up and was like, you got to come, they turned your water off. Is it, is it something that we can do beyond, if someone's water is turned off, is it necessary that they have to wait the 24 hours to get it turned back on? I mean, can we look into that? Because that's, I mean, even if it's turned off within an hour, they pay it, and they still have to wait? I mean, I don't know who came up with that. I know it didn't used to be that way, but is, is that something we can look into?
We, we can look into it, make sure we do it in the best practice. I think what happens, sometimes they get scheduled for a route, and you have to do so much work during the day, they might have time to circle back. I know in some instances, they've been able to. But we can definitely make sure we're looking at that process hard.
Okay. Because if I'm not mistaken, and I would like to get the number, I don't necessarily have to have the names, but if I'm not mistaken, I know I received at least 10 calls saying that they were turned off, and the conversation pertaining to how the city was dealing with the court issue and their water, you know, they felt it unfair. So I, I definitely want to make sure that we're, we're not doing a greater service to one other, you know, outside of residents. So I appreciate if you look into that, mayor.
Absolutely. And just, just adding on to the, to the issue with the courts being off, if, if we have a resident who has an anomaly, and those bills with the court were anomalies, they were turning at a certain level, then the bills came in a lot higher, we do the same thing, we look into what they, what caused an anomaly. We've sent our crews out to check, and we might have a resident with a leaky toilet, and we'll give them some tips on things to do. But we try to figure out what caused that spike in that use. So we did the same thing with the court, and we've done the same thing with commercial properties, where we investigate first to find out what that was. The court never said that they wouldn't pay the bill, they just wanted to make sure it was, wasn't a clerical error, it wasn't an adding error in the machine. So they want to make sure it was indeed usage. We went through the whole process with them. Once they saw what it was, and it was an actual usage, they, they paid the bill. So it's all taken care of.
I just, you know, I was looking at it, and I thought, I thought maybe it was a leak or something. I mean, a new building can easily have a leak. And I thought that was a very expensive leak, but when it came back and said it wasn't a leak, I was like, wow, they're using a lot of water. But thank you.
Is there any more communication from the council? If not, that takes us to number 13, adjournment, and the time is 8:39.
So moved.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for adjournment. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.